Let's bow in prayer. Dear gracious Father, we thank you so much for the way you blessed us in the last year. When we look to a new year, but we look back at the progress that's been made, we thank you for your grace. Thank you, you kept us from any major storms this year with the weather. And Father, we just pray that you would bless the leaders and the employees of our town, and you would continue to help us to move forward. We ask that it would be helpful in improving the town and making a better life for the citizens that live here. Pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thanks to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see it. Well called. Cheryl, Cherry Audrey. Cheryl McCollum here. Robert Gansley. Thanks ma'am Nicole Wiggins.
Present.
And Mel Rowland is here. So as you all see, we have a four on the three, and we have two that's absent. Okay, any additional deleting, deletion, or any amendment to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to add under new business, um, the Telford Hotel.
Okay, the Telford Hotel, um, the letter D. Any more?
I would like to add whatever we can do with our fifth member.
I want you to get some advice when the attorney pulls.
I asked her that last month.
Well, we're not going to discuss that right now.
Of course not.
We're waiting. No, we'll be attorney first before we want to do anything about that. Anything else, um, to add?
So let that topic come under something that listens.
Yeah, we're looking. Yeah, we're looking into a plan.
Okay.
Not an issue. And helpful, we don't want to overstep with helpful.
Oh, okay. Because it is medical. I got you.
It's medical, we don't want to get in trouble with helpful.
They would not get permission to resume meetings? I believe we did.
They don't have Zoom.
Everybody has Zoom, it's your telephone.
No, everybody don't have Zoom.
If you're on, if you're on the Zoom group, you cannot participate in the vote. You know, the voters have to physically be here to, to, for your vote to count. To reject it. We had two big, we all know that we could take contract. You transact in your business where you got three physically. Unless, unless three, three is normally a, a, no, your committee or whatever. Three here project to.
Anything else for the adding or deletion?
No.
They may have to give a motion.
I move that we add the Telford Hotel as item D under new business.
We make a motion.
I thought it was.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, here's the motion in second that we add, uh, under new business, the Telford Hotel is D item. Okay, um, ready for the question? I mean, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, ayes have it. Okay, moving on down to the next one. Um, approval of the minutes of, um, November the thirteenth and the eighteenth.
I move that we accept the minutes as written from November the thirteenth and November the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, here's the motion and second that we approve the minutes from November thirteenth and the eighteenth of twenty twenty-five. Now we're moving on down to number five, which is the, um, the budget and financial.
You can vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Powell.
That's what I was saying.
Um, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Now we move on to number five.
Great, okay.
I'm sorry.
So always a pleasure to be here. Uh, you have a handout. One, uh, this is your, uh, financial report for the two months ended in November. So you have two handouts, but this one is entitled Town of White Springs, Florida Budget versus actuals. So on page one is the general fund. Uh, the columns are the actual for the two months, the pro-rata budget, the amount over budget, and percent. So if you look on page, uh, two at the top, the general fund revenue was one oh seven, four sixty-five oh five. The pro-rata budget was one thirty-three, seven eighty-nine six. So your under budget, twenty-six thousand, three fifteen ninety-one. Uh, I've reviewed the budget, and that's mainly a reflection of your ad政 taxes. Uh, you haven't collected much of that, most of those come in.
We got forty-three thousand today.
Today, okay, so that'll, will change the budget. Yeah, it'll happen in December, January, and February. Okay, so if you go to page four, uh, three at the bottom, your expenditures are one forty-four, three fifty-four, fifty-three. Pro-rata budget's one thirty-three, two eighty-one. Uh, the main reason that you're, that you overspent the budget by eleven thousand is that you paid the first installment on the county fire contract, plus you had some mainly fire chief expenditures. So you had an overlap with the two fire departments.
Can you tell me what the expenses were on the fire chief?
His salary and health insurance.
And that's different from?
It's part of the fire budget.
So why would that be an excuse for being this much over?
Because you also paid a whole quarter of the county fire contract.
So we double paid for that?
I would say it had an overlap with the two fire departments.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't double pay for the county. We paid one, one quarter.
But we ain't gonna have.
Thirty-seven dollars, five hundred, uh, uh, a hundred fifty-five.
So we paid Steve, Alan paid the fire, the county.
See, again, Steve, Steve was employed until the fifteenth of December.
Yeah.
That was his official, the last day.
Okay, I'm just asking, I'm allowed to ask.
Good question.
Okay, so your expenditures are one forty, at the bottom of page three, one forty-four, three five four fifty-three. The, uh, pro-rata budget's one thirty-three, two eighty-one. So your expenditures, the revenue, the expenditures exceeded the revenue by thirty-six, eight eighty-nine for basically the two reasons that I mentioned. And again, two months into the budget, you can't get really up, but there's no alarming issues there. Page four is the enterprise fund. And if you look at about the middle of the page, total income, one forty-six oh oh eight. Here, that's the whole budget. Uh, and then you go to, uh, page five at the bottom. Uh, the expenditures are one fifty-one, three ninety-five. So here, you're only over five thousand, three sixty-six, which is, is reasonable for two months. It should, hopefully by the end of the year, it will balance out. So any questions on the financial report?
Oh, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on. And the, the next, uh, possibly in your packet, but there's something that says, Town of White Springs General Fund Budget Amendment One. It's about a three-page report. So the town has made several significant changes to the budget since it was first adopted, and this amendment appropriates sufficient funds to, uh, to handle those expenditures, and I'll kind of give you highlights. In the general, the government area, uh, you had some salary adjustments that increased the budget ten thousand, four ninety-four. Uh, you, uh, had an audit expense increase of thirty thousand dollars. You had a planning increase of six thousand dollars. Going over to page two, you basically removed your fire department, added in the county fire department, and the result of it was a positive. You've reduced the fire budget by eighteen, seven oh seven. So now if you go to page three. Okay, so the bottom line is, is that you increased the budget, all those changes, twenty-seven thousand, eight, seven, eight, seven, about twenty-eight thousand.
Where is that?
Uh, on page three at the bottom, the middle column.
Do you have another three? I'll have another three.
Yeah, maybe look in the tree on the financial report. This is on the budget. If you look in the increase-decrease column.
We have a separate paper for the.
Yeah, I handed out a budget amendment that was a separate.
And you had the one in the.
Thirty-eight.
All right, I'm ahead of it.
Okay, so, uh, so what that means is that you funded your budget changes. However, basically twenty-eight thousand of those recurring expenditures are coming out of reserves. Uh, so it is reducing your reserves. So because those are recurring expenditures, which will mainly increase with some inflation the next year, it would be prudent to balance the budget. And the way you balance the budget is increase your revenues next year by twenty-eight thousand or decrease expenditures by twenty-eight thousand. Or else, if you don't do that, you'll just keep eating away at your reserves, which have already been lowered. And for your reference, that twenty-eight thousand is about one million of ad政 tax.
So you're saying if we raised our taxes, we'd be covered?
If you raised the taxes, one million, it would balance your budget.
One million.
One million. So, but I'm just saying, because you had a open, I'm being your budget consultant. You had over-expense, significant over-expended in the prior year, but most of that was on recurring, but this twenty-eight thousand will stay with you.
And this is for a year?
Yeah, yes. And it's comprised of the things that I mentioned. So because this is a budget amendment, it would be appropriate to, to vote on it?
Thank you. So do we have to vote on this, or?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing right now?
Well, because you're, you've obligated that spending it, you really need to vote right now.
So I make a motion to accept this budget amendment number one for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, that's appropriate motion.
And second motion?
Okay, here's the motion in the second that we accept the budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, ayes have it.
All that I have, if you have no questions.
Only, well, I'm only mentioning to you that, you'll be able, but, uh, we have, uh, since we made Don Shea the city clerk and, 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 uh, Charles. We made her, give her access, visual access to the, uh, bank, bank statement, bank account, so that she can, we assume that the checks would soon be, who are going back and forth and, uh, be controlled much more by the, by, with the work we're doing with the bank. And I do a computer program, come out, hopefully, that, uh, we'll get, we'll get faster service on our checks, and you won't have to rush so hard to get this report done. We maybe will have, give him a couple extra days to get, get this report to us.
So the bayonets, you said Don Shea is now the town clerk?
Town clerk, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And I made, uh, seduce the office manager slash, you, you told the supervisor.
Congratulations, you get, you get to do more shots.
But anyhow, just want, uh, we're also, the passage to resolution I got a little later on, that we will, uh, the town will become part of positive faith through the, uh, first federal bank, which, which will protect us from scammers and fraud and, uh, nothing, we, we, we'll keep, during, during the, uh, when the government closed down, we sent thirty-six thousand dollars worth of checks to, to, I mentioned there in front of me, payment, certified mail, and it's lost in the world somewhere. Uh, nobody can find it.
Can we stop payment?
We should, we should stop payment on everything. We stopped payment on it and, and sent, uh, electronic transfers afternoon, today. And that's where we're doing this stuff, so Don Shea can be able to do this. So everybody, everybody will start taking checks sooner. And we might, it's all the way to be mostly ACH transfers and electronic transfers. So been head of the game with that, so. But the, the, the checks have not surfaced, and so they've been stopped payment on it. Just one of those things that happened, and the bank says that they had more and more of this in the last two months, and they've had years, and they all blame it back on the government. The government shut down, and the mail really got mess in some places. So if it showed up, we'd load them out.
Since we've given Don Shea and some media more work, basically, did they get a?
Yes, they, they.
Is that budgeted?
It's in the budget that you just put.
It's part of that budget amendment. It's part of the budget amendment, you just budget on.
Yep, they, they have it.
Anybody else after the thing, so?
Yes, to you all too, Merry Christmas.
She probably saved.
Okay, next thing on the, uh, citizen twenty-four.
I wanted, I wanted to address the property adjacent to the church, is that okay?
Yes, you can do that.
All right. I have better maps for you. So all you need is more papers up there.
Is that what we're talking about? Is this, that one?
Yes.
No, no, that's what we call that, but, we, we should, we should land next to that.
So this is a what?
No, no, that's, that's a completely different annexation there.
That one up here.
Three show me about that there.
Give you the maps on that property while I'm up here.
Sir.
No, I just want, I want to thank you for your consideration of that, but, um, our church supports the Pregnancy Care Center. It has operations in Lake City and Live Oak, but they also have a mobile, mobile van that goes to different communities and offers free x-rays and free sonograms for ladies. And they do this in Jasper, but they have offered to come to White Springs and schedule doing that in White Springs, if that's something that the town council thinks would benefit our residents. So I just wanted, I just wanted to make that offer to you. And if you guys like the idea, I'll put you in, in charge of the director. I talked to the director last week, and she's very excited about it. I don't know whether you'd want to do it here at the town hall or do it in a more visible location on the highway, and, uh, and we can advertise it.
Well, like I said, like I mentioned earlier, if, if we can coordinate that maybe with the mobile unit that the counties got.
The health unit, okay.
The health unit, the portable health unit is going to be coming here, I understand, once, twice a, a month here. Uh, maybe we could, if we could, if possible, and, and I'm thinking right now, everybody's going to the ballot lottery by the lottery.
Okay, that would be excellent, yeah.
If that don't work out, I'll, I'll lie here, we, we had a trailer back here.
Okay.
It would be a proper, because well, that was, and she meant, and all, they, they want to do it, it'll work better.
They got the help, the farmer right there by the church.
That'll be on our church now.
But anyhow, if you'll get enough.
But they still got the, you know, they still have access to the property, not, they don't use the building, but if they have to put their mobile, the, you know, if they needed the property for some other reason, I mean, that was part of our agreement. But, but you still got Bailey Ives, you know, also.
That's too far behind.
Right now.
Ms. McCollum, you had a question?
What are the requirements that they need to bring this unit in?
Uh.
They need electricity, water?
I think it's a self-contained unit, it's a travel trailer.
Okay.
And I think it's a self-contained unit. They set up in a parking lot in Jasper.
Okay.
And they do that frequently, so I'll, I'll let them know if you guys are interested. That's great, thank you.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Not about the mobile unit, but John Warner was saying that your church donates to the town?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, can you explain that?
We, in our budget, in our budget, five percent of what we take in in our offering plate goes to benevolence, to, to needs in White Springs and the south part of the county. And a lot of that goes through the nest, if you're familiar with that ministry, and, uh, mothers and families and children that need housing and need furniture and need clothing and need food. And so we got five percent of everything we take in in our offering plate goes to local benevolence, and then another two percent goes to the Pregnancy Counseling Center. So seven percent of everything we take in in our offering plate goes to those, those two things.
So the needs rather than the town?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Negotiate local community deal.
And what, how will this property that you are requesting benefit the church?
We, it's, and let me, let me answer that by saying that the adjacent property and on the other side is Mr. Fred Bowles. And Fred hasn't decided whether he wants it split between us and him or whether he wants us to have the whole thing. But we just put in this week a thirty thousand dollar playground on that side of our equip, uh, our property, and this, this would extend the playground area over on that side.
And when will that playground be open, and who is it open to?
Hopefully, hopefully next week. Open, open during church time and other times to people who come to our church and hopefully to the community.
And if somebody wanted to have access to, is it, is it locked at night and during?
It has a fence around it, it doesn't have a lock on it.
Just a fence?
Yeah.
So if somebody wanted to use it, say for a family reunion, is that something that can happen?
We, I'd be glad to take it to the church.
Okay, and, um.
Uh, we don't want, we don't want it vandalized, or we don't want a bunch of drug deals going down out there. But absolutely, you understand that.
Is it lockable?
It is lockable, yes, ma'am, but we don't have locks on it right now.
Okay, okay.
Good question, thank you.
So under, with permission, it can be used by the townspeople?
As long as it's got church approval.
Right.
So, and our fellowship hall is the same way. If there's someone that needs, uh, a place, our building is there to be used. So in fact, I'd like to see some kind of quarterly breakfast, a men's breakfast in town, and, uh, and other things. I think we need a ministerial alliance with the pastors working together in White Springs.
That'll help after your first year, when their pastor gets here, he, he'll work with you and.
Great. I think, I think there are a lot of things that we can work together for the improvement of White Springs.
And do you ready to go?
Good.
Who, who you? I'm trying with our pastor.
Oh, don't worry, we don't need a pastor.
You met our pastor, she's ready to work. She lives for things like this.
No, I can cook, right? We provide roll aids and stomach pumps, but, but I can cook.
Mr. Gardner, what did you say about pastor coming in?
Times ago.
Yeah, Derek the pastor, he, he wants to, kind of be coordinated a lot and seek for, uh, things that we'll work with.
Wonderful.
Kind of be a.
It would be nice.
Form a coalition, or what, what they're calling it.
So when are we voting on this, and what does it take? Have we started?
Who is in a vote?
It's not a vote.
Probably a, a, a community.
No, she's talking about the property owner.
Oh, we, we.
We don't know if they want to share that. Well, they want it, but we don't, we have five of it, probably, probably, wait on the, uh, certified or non-royal letter of another property owner. Say he gives up his app, and you give all the church, oh, we should give it for us.
It's in between two properties.
So we're waiting on?
The other property owner, yes, to this side, yes, ma'am.
And then, and then you guys will do the survey and then bring it to us?
We've had, we've had a bid on the survey. Six hundred to sixteen hundred. Depending on where they can find the monuments, or what a beginning, and the extent of the survey. And then it's four to weeks out, four to six weeks out, to schedule the survey to be done. That's how busy they are. But yeah, we, we've got a bid on the survey.
Having that all be, we, we all.
We'll take care of all that, and then bring it for an official vote.
So we're thinking spring?
Yes, ma'am.
That time.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're doing a little business. We don't have a crowd, but it's a crowd, you know, shut it down now. We're doing something good, okay. Okay, nothing else. Uh, we're gonna go on to, what's my big sign? It's gonna be old business.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, the second reading of the ordinance, uh, ordinance, ordinance. Twenty twenty-five dash zero four, gambling reservation.
There we go. So, this is the gambling one?
Yes.
Gotcha. And I, we're gonna end up changing the number on it, since it's done in twenty twenty-five, but it's gonna be twenty twenty-six oh one. When the ordinance of the town council of the town of White Springs, Florida, repealing ordinance number twenty twenty-two zero zero one in its entirety, reenacting ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one as originally adopted, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
This is the second reading.
Okay, this is the second reading of the gambling reservation. Um, what can I hear?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty six oh four?
Or one.
Oh, one, oh, one.
Do I hear second?
I second.
It has the motion and second that we approve uh resolution of the gambling decision twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six dash zero one. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Approve. Okay, let's move on down to new business. Okay, approval employment agreement with town manager.
I just found the one that you gave me today.
Wait, before we go on with that, I'm sorry, did we approve the new gambling, the old new gambling?
Okay, what we did is we repealed the gambling, the last one that was in.
So it's only one piece?
Say, right, and now the old ban on gambling is back in.
Okay.
We made it original.
And it was all done in that one vote? Yep, got you. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm a little slow.
I'd recommend that we table day eight until January meeting and uh.
Okay.
I know she's been tired, but my, 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 my.
Yeah, see, see, uh, the attorney has not, um, lived over it yet, so we're gonna table, um, eight. Town manager's, um, um, agreement, we're gonna table that until next month.
That we would then maybe make the pay retroactive, if you do that.
But he can still get his pay pretty soon, right? He's trying to hold up what he's got, right?
No, I'm sure, I'm sure getting more.
Oh, I'm saying goals, got the big.
And I, and I would like to say one, one thing so that the word gets out. The order for the, we didn't, we didn't budget the Christmas boners for the employees. But we, we've got some lag time. We're gonna have about three months of lag, lag time, a minimum of two, two months of lag time of what my priest would be versus what I'm getting, and it's already in the budget. And I'm gonna use that for the five Christmas bonuses, for the five employees. I'm not, I'm not taking one. Get, get one for the employees and that just goes. And so when I worry about budget adjustments in there, it's already in the, in the budget.
But it's coming out of your pay?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
The line item.
It's coming out of the line item, it's not coming out of the pay, because I haven't gotten an increase yet. The increase as of the first of October, so we got October, November, now December, and I'm still getting the same as I was. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get over it. So that, I just want y'all to know, when the time comes up, somebody talk about bonuses, it's.
It's already taken care of.
About your budget.
Right.
It's in the budget, it's already been taken care of. Okay, um, the next item is the uh approval of the uh amendment for main agreement. DW twenty four zero one zero zero.
What this, the original loan agreement, the state revolving loan fund was done back in two thousand and twenty, uh, two, two twenty two, two thousand twenty two. And there have been several changes to the uh civil rights uh, 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 section, the signs required, uh, insurance requirements. And what this does, this amendment just uh amends the uh agreement we had effective December twentieth, two thousand twenty two to include all the changes that the legislature and everybody made to bring, bring our own, uh, our agreement up to, up to date, and it, it uh goes through June the twentieth of two thousand twenty six. So that's all, all this is, is just, you know, bringing forth the certain, certain provisions that have changed since this was done until two thousand twenty two.
Is this gonna change anything monetarily?
No, 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 money, none. All it is is word changes, word changes and uh some loan paper from September fifteenth next year, which is two thousand dollars. I bid next year. So I recommend approval next year to get back to the state.
What can I hear?
I make a motion that we approve the changes to the state revolving fund amendment one to loan agreement DW two four oh one hundred, town of White Springs.
I second that motion.
Okay, here's the motion and second that we approve the amendment to loan agreement DW two, two forty, uh, zero, yeah, two forty one hundred. Uh, any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? The motion carried, I'll say it. Okay, the next item, appro, approval resolution number twenty 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 six dash nineteen ACH and positive pay yet first federal. That's in the package, that is.
I, I just put it in tonight, but because it's, it's what I was telling the call before we left, is to order to, with electronic banking and automatic transfers. Uh, Don Shady's having access to be able to go in to the bank and, and she can't, she can't write checks or sign checks. But we have something that requires a, uh, electronic transfer of money. She'll be able to do it with my, with my approval on it, uh. It's, it probably, I don't, we may have to have some more changes in the future as this becomes more and more prevalent. But what this does is, is it allows, I heard have access to either making information file and to make, make ACH payments, due to many companies not accepting checkbook payments of any sorts. And uh also that uh it uh au, authorized the town to enroll with no cost to the, the bank's uh positive pay program, which is uh uh helps us in scams and fraud, things, protection, protection we didn't have. Then some of y'all may have heard, uh, during, right, my first guy here, they were actors about the the mayor, I get that, so they were, they was at the top of the tier, and we didn't do it, so it's like this is a good time to sign that, or that positive thing. And uh it's uh also this is, is not allow her to sign checks. That's still what makes it, the three of us up, up here.
I thought she already had access to all of them.
She had, she didn't have, we, through their, through their system, she had access to it, but through what they call E-COR, which is their ACH and electronic transfer program. She didn't have access to any of that, and this allows her to.
And that is different from what she does in the office or in addition to or the same?
It's all part of what we all have to do. We, we do a thousand things in here. But, you know, this is all part of city clerk and bookkeeper's job, but uh.
So is this in addition to what she was already doing or it's part of what she was already doing?
The ACH payments will be, because this is something new that we, we just started.
Okay, that makes sense.
So I'd recommend that we approve this.
We'd like to read the resolution.
Resolution of town of White Springs, Florida, authorizing the town manager as the town coordinator to appoint employees to review accounts, no signatures, of town financial records at First Federal Bank and provide an effective date. And the effective date would be today, if it's true.
I move the motion.
I move that we accept resolution twenty twenty six nineteen.
Motion denied.
Oh, wait now, I'm trying to find it. No, 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 don't do that, be all right?
It'll take you some longer.
I'm sorry.
That's why I had to look for you.
It's close next to the back.
I second.
Okay, here's the motion and second that we accept resolution number twenty twenty six dash nineteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the next one, next item, I'm gonna move to this, Telford Hotel.
I think everybody, I gave everybody a copy of it. Um, when I first wrote up about the Telford, um, well, gave me permission to explore options. And today I have to, I'm coming before you all to give a vote in consensus to move forward with seeking funding for the strategic purchase and preservation plan concerning the Telford Hotel. Um, if you read through, um, if you read through my packet that I gave you all, this entire project is not, is being done without, um, being a cost to the town. It is this, how would I say it? Okay. In the vision statement, it says preserve the cultural heart of White Springs, let's keep parking economics with violence safe without burning the town type areas or diverting municipal funds. Um, the Telford, the nineteen oh two Telford Hotel property represents a once in a generation opportunity to secure its cornerstone of local heritage and transform it into a diverse economic engine. And I just want, you can read through it yourselves. I gave everybody a sheet I want to look through it, so I don't have to take up a lot of time. But I want permission from the council to go ahead and move forward with seeking funds for the purchase renovation and renovation for the Telford.
So, okay, you just want us to give you permission to dig for some more information?
No, to go ahead. I can't send out any letters to FOMC to show. I can't do anything beyond what I've already done. This is the research that you all have allowed me to do. But to move forward, to go ahead and actively seek, um, funding from different foundations to apply for grants and any of those things, I need the permission of the council to move forward beyond what I've already done.
It's the mission statement you just read in here?
That's the first page.
The vision statement.
It's the vision statement.
It's the vision statement.
Listen, I got so far my entire packet. This is just the preliminary. My entire packet that I have so far, it's like I'm a study paper.
Okay, if you read, there's a lot more than what this says, what you just.
Well, if you look through it, it says, I'll go briefly over it. I make it fast.
I'm confused because what you read, I was trying to find it. I didn't see it written.
Okay, it's right here, under the vision statement. And this, for the ones who don't have it from, when they're watching on the video, it says why does the church matter? Um, cultural and historical preservation, long-term economic catalysts, increase local property value and business growth. Um, the financial strategy is to, my financial strategy is to do this without town funding. It would be the property of the town, but it would be a separate entity that would be responsible for operating, so it won't boggle the town down um, and interfere with our operating and what we have to do. Um, it would be a public and a private partnership, a PPP. Um, the town will own, is the owner and act as the steward while private hospitality or event company will operate it. Okay, um, I am trying to do this with grants and preservation funding with different historical societies and one of those campaigns. It's just, it's like a lot of positive, it's more positive than negative, and for the ones who grew up in White Springs and in this area, um, even for the ones who moved here, the Telford Hotel is one of the last remaining historical properties in this town. And I, and as well as a lot of the other citizens I've been speaking to, would rather see it be in the town's hand than a private person to get, because if a private company gets it, they can do whatever they want. Just because it's some historical preservation doesn't mean they can't demolish it. So I would rather keep our history, because we, White Springs is the first tourism destination in the state of Florida. We have so much to offer and we're talking about, um, economic development, tourism, this is a main, a major part of that. When people come to town, you know, they still go to the Spring House. The Spring House is nothing like it was back when, before my time, but, you know, you have the pictures of, so people still don't look at the remains of that Spring House, but we still have the Telford that's there. It is one of the few hotels that was not demolished in the fire in nineteen eleven. It survived, so since that survived, I feel like we need to fight for the survival of this property instead of letting it get into private hands. If we own it, we can determine what's there. And if things go the way that I planned on it doing and that I've been praying for it to go, um, and if we follow this plan that I have, it will not be a financial burden on the town, but it will bring in revenue for the town. It will bring jobs to the, to the citizens here, and it will get us back with, in the tourism business. Um, it'll bring in more tourists, because people still come. If you look online and you pull up the Telford, you have where people are coming now and they're so disappointed because the Telford is no longer open. And they remember coming with their parents when they were younger or, you know. So I feel like this is very important to us and to this town. This is a valuable, vital piece of our history that we should maintain.
Okay, so what you're requesting is to send out, tell me what you're requesting.
Okay, my request in, in short words is to move, to let, for the council to allow me to move forward with the project, with the Telford Hotel, the acquisition, we're able to do, to, the acquisition of the property and to revitalize, get it repaired, refurbished, well, the owner's already working on the repair. He's done a lot in there. And Mr. Gardner can tell you from when we took the tour, it's not as bad as the rumors when people were saying it had to be done.
Question, um, so the very next step is for you to send out letters. Is that gonna have the town of White Springs authority on it?
Yeah, because it's gonna be a property owned by the town.
And what will that, what will that piece of paper say to?
It's gonna be a letterhead, a town.
It's gonna be a town's letterhead, and it's basically, it's going to say that the town is interested in this property and it's going to give the history of the property. Um, it's kind of like what this is, but it's got way more into the entire packet that I have, that I'm working on.
So when you, when you get everything together, just type it up on the letterhead, letterhead, and uh, and let us.
Right, but I can't do anything until like a grant and
Yeah.
Look for grants, look for funding. I can't do anything without the town's permission to move forward. And that's what I need. Everything that's going out will be, the town will be in the know and it's not just gonna be needed. I want, I want to form a committee, which is why I'm planning to do a, um, oh God, a workshop.
And who, who is gonna be responsible for keeping track of what?
The committee will. And this is gonna be at the bare minimum cost to the town. The only thing the town would have to help with would be the inspection. Because some of the inspection might be a hundred dollars, some might be two, but it's still bare minimum for what we're looking at and what we're getting.
Okay, so.
But as far as, for the rehabilitation of the property, the acquisition of the property, all of this is going to be done without using any of the town's funds, but the town will be the primary owner of the property, the judge will not operate the property. It's all in the packet. If, if you look through it, everything is here, but most part. But most part of it. Yes, ma'am.
So I think what we have to do is maybe that's way too far forward and we gotta maybe break it up into smaller steps. I think that'll help to kind of get us there.
Can we get a committee first?
Yes, I think, I think that would probably be a good idea, getting the committee.
Just a good framework for one of that.
Right, and, um, putting together a letter, you know, where the committee helps with, you know.
You know, I got all this already, it's just that I can't do anything without.
A lot of grants have different requirements, some of them will require matching, some of them will require reimbursement. And so, uh, and some may require resolutions from the council specific for that grant.
But at each phase, I don't, it would, you know, you have to prove different things at each phase. But the main thing is to approve, to move forward with this project.
I think you go with the committee first, I think that's, that's number one and a timeline and.
Because I got like
Yeah.
a strict timeline because some grants that we have to apply for has to be done in the next few months.
Okay, I see, I'm trying to say we need to go with a committee very soon.
How many do you recommend be on the committee?
You want an odd number, so anywhere, I would think seven to nine. Of course, for something this big, you don't want three people.
Right.
Yeah, you need like seven, nine.
So many projects.
Right.
I said seven.
Yeah.
Seven to nine, because in case somebody is not there and.
So maybe at the January meeting, you bring in the names of the seven people who are willing to commit along with a, a sample of what your letter to the various entities would look like. Is that, is that fair?
I think you go with the committee first, but that's kind of. Before that, yeah, let them work through that, do a workshop as well. So maybe before it even do the, you know, file the committee.
I think I would do the workshop first, but either way, I have to have permission to move forward to get to that.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I don't have no problem with that, just go ahead and do what you need to do.
I need to form a vote though.
I think we, I think we need to vote to have a committee, have a workshop to, and form a committee. So we know what kind of support is actually going to be given to you.
And expand those, those city plans until permission is given about the gap.
Right, that's the whole point, but in order to move forward with any of it.
Or something like that.
But no, no letters go out until the committee and the, and the.
Right, but it is just, the whole point is. The whole point was I have to have official, I have to, it has to be official for me to move forward beyond.
It'll be in a minute.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve Nikki to form a committee to explore strategic purchase and preservation plan for the Telford Hotel.
Second motion. There has been a motion in second that we give Vice Mayor Nicole Williams permission to go forward with the, um, Telford Hotel project.
With the workshop, with the workshop.
With the workshop. End of discussion. All in favor? Aye, you have a vote.
Oh. I'll leave both, I'm sorry, I was.
But now you know.
Yeah, I know. I'll lay down for a minute.
I got you. Okay, motion carried.
I got it, I got it.
Say, motion carried.
That was beautiful work you did on that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Y'all just don't know how many man I would have seen.
Oh, I can't imagine.
Okay, next one, the, um, okay, the committee.
Well, before that, I have a question, what is this that was given to us tonight about owner authorization application?
Is that going to be something you discovered?
That's in your minute, okay. And this one too, is in your?
Yes, right.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. You ready? Now, manager.
Okay, couple, couple of things, uh, I passed out, I think I left on the, on the table back there. Uh, mayor and I went to, uh, Orlando last week for Florida, uh, Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference. And, uh, that's where they vote to have the various policy committees. That vote on the priorities that, uh, they're going to really push with the various legislators. Uh, and you got copies out here, I think I'll have some out there, but not, uh, we, we can make copies of it, but, uh, it had priorities, of course, uh, and don't get too much killed with, killed with the profit taxes. Uh, they don't choose to, uh, use, uh, uh, enterprise funds, which is order utility and other types of funds, open general fund to support other parts of government and that, that's, and that's, that's not being supported to, uh, in the way that all of it's written, kind of, of course, that, uh, a sort of affordable housing, not, not, uh, cheap housing, but affordable housing and, uh, and, and I think if, uh, uh, I think the mayor and, uh, they did our, our, with the, the four CCBG houses we got going on here in town last weekend, they are well-built spacious, uh, equipment. How, very, I mean, anybody that wants to live in those, they're not the things that had twenty, twenty-five years ago where they stuck something out there and called it a home, but these are, these are nice, nice homes that, uh, we have here and, uh, we get four of them finished after first of year. And then we can go down their list and we don't know how much, how many more because COVID and everything knocked, knocked a lot of this stuff out, out, you got, you got on the list with, they got about a ten-year waiting period for applications already in, in our, a lot of these. The, uh, right, right now, uh, if we didn't have a, uh, the Florida Senate Bill one eighty is really, uh, got a lot, you get a lot of talk, was it's the one that restricts ta, uh, towns from going in and doing the emergency work after the emergency. I mean, it's, it's, it's really, I don't know who had it, Harebrine had the idea, but, uh, it, it's really, uh, got a lot of people upset, so we're, we're not supporting that. Uh, except to take out two, two sections of it that are very detrimental to local governments. Of course, sovereign guarantee, like everything else, uh, looks like it's going. Right now, we've got a two hundred fifty thousand dollar limit on how much somebody could sue the city for if you, if you build, build a house on somebody else's, approve the annexation or something on somebody else's property, then go through it right, uh, right now, it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, they expect it to go four hundred thousand with the legislature. So that, 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 if you got sued and you lost that, that's the cities or local government or insurance companies will have to pay. Uh, they're to move to, uh, uh, to not have, not allow any more, uh, community redevelopment. My cities have got to, done a lot of, a lot of things in downtown, uh, people that's got downtown areas. It's, it's done a lot of those, but they're, some of the legislatures are opposing that. Uh, they're also looking at not allowing you, a city that furnishes water and sewer and anything outside of civil limits, you got to charge them the same amount that you charge the people in, in town. And so we're, uh, we're, we're not fully, cities not supporting that. Uh, a, uh, state's trying to get one election date in, in the, in the state and municipal ballot, various elections at various times year to year, and we won't keep it that way, so we'll be opposing that. Uh, one thing that is, uh, we are supporting is anybody who is working with elections.
Working with elections.
Working with elections, cities, municipal elections. Uh, that we're, they're, they're going to be able to have their personal records, uh, restricted as to who can get what. People, they've had so many, uh, flavored, uh, lawsuits filed against people who, city clerks and, uh, even, even some attorneys that, that people filed, uh, against things they did during their election to, uh, so it's kind of giving the same restriction then that does a, a police, police officer, um, from their personal records.
There's only, their work during an election.
Yeah, well, for that, and this is what it was, uh, for record exemption from clerks and the staff that worked on elections. Uh, the other thing is that.
Wait, I wanted to cover some, ask you some questions on these, is that okay?
Yeah.
On the, um, the, the extra surcharges? If this goes through, that means we have to change our water and sewer rates for outside of the town, outside of city limits, that's correct.
Yeah, everybody, we pay the same as you pay.
Okay, and we don't have any community redevelopment agencies here, correct?
No, we don't.
Okay, um.
And there, there'll be a whole book that will be coming out on, on backup paper.
And as far as council, all we have to do is be aware and talk about this, there's nothing that we need to do besides vote or?
For. Well, you, you, you're going to be, they're going to be getting a whole book of talking points about this. When you go meet with your legislators, you'll have some talking points. But this was just, this was just approved Friday and it came out, so.
Can we put this on our website so everybody can see it?
Yeah.
Probably, this should be on their website, the Florida League Cities, it's, it's on their website.
But how many citizens are going to go to the Florida League City? They will go to the town, their, their town's website. Okay, thank you.
Another, uh, thing is that we have a, a request for a, uh, rezone of the property that the elementary school that, uh, he's, he's applied and paid the, paid the fee and, uh, I just want y'all, y'all be aware that, uh, from the, uh, son, son holders who own the, uh, from the old school to, uh, a vacant lot they have at the, uh, on the first street side of the, back of the school. They want to do a rezonement from the residential modern used to commercial to put a used car and rental car lot back there.
Are they going to take down all those trees?
Yeah, not many, not many trees back there, really.
Is that the lot like you?
Oh, no, no.
No, no, this, this is for the elementary school.
Well, then they cut all the, then they cut all those trees down.
Yeah, maybe.
So, but this, this is going to go to the fundings, only committed with their evaluation and, and, and then, and come back to have, have hope here and come back to the council.
So this is, where are they trying to put it at?
It'd be behind Ritz.
Yeah, behind.
Oh, behind Ritz.
Did Ritz get a vote in this? Did Ritz get a vote in this?
That's first year.
No, that's very.
Sweet Ritz and the school was first year.
No, when the buses just walk in.
Right, okay.
Is this what we're talking about, the square on here?
We're, we're, we're big square.
And this is Ritz House right here?
Yeah, right. Where, where.
Ritz will love having a new car lot behind his house.
Well, I mean, that's.
He could put up a painting though.
It's, it's not done, but he, he'll, he'll find out, I wonder what he'll be aware.
This is Ritz.
He'll go through the, he'll go through the re, uh, re.
He'll be back there.
And look, we don't run into something like that with, with, uh, Sinisee.
Who's, who's this?
This is under our new policy.
Is that, is that what we're managing?
We'll need the actual ask for the, because we do have that.
No, that's an app.
I, I remember. We're going to volunteer for the parade, uh, Friday. Uh, our special events committee is, is-
It's gone.
Don't look like it's no special events. So, uh,
It's gone.
We're going, we're asking people to come on, uh, Friday to help us with the parade. And then Saturday, Saturday morning from ten, uh, eight to ten, we're gonna be served pancakes and sausages. The fire poppers gonna cook for us. They're gonna cook and fix everything for us. Are you coming, you coming to eat in, uh, from eight to, eight to, eight to ten on Saturday morning?
What's it cost?
We're gonna ask for a donation of five dollars or, we're, we're not gonna hold a plate out there. We'll have a donation box for anybody in there. So this is just something we're, I think you've always been having something on Saturday mornings. But Santa Claus, Santa Claus has been busy, staying busy, so we're gonna out, don't wear him out. Like that.
So is he gonna be there?
Huh?
Santa Claus gonna be there?
No, no, no.
I'll be there in the evening. I might, I could be there in the morning, I don't know.
He can go make a pancake with it.
I could be, I mean, he could be.
He could be.
He could be.
That's, that's our guy.
I'll, I'll send him a text.
So, need to, you have any friends?
Oh, I was gonna say, Miss Connor, only water bills right now. There is a different price for outside city limits already.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're-
But they're trying to make it not-
They're gonna be the same, if this happens.
Or they wanna change it to be the same.
Everybody pays the same.
Okay, got you.
Just another, another way to get, get to the city.
Yeah. Okay, um, public rights?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
No, I just, I just like to think, uh, City of Jasper. I know there's nobody here from City of Jasper, but Wednesday night about twelve o'clock, Tuesday night, twelve fifteen, I got a high level alarm at the lift station down here at Bridge Street. And so I came out. Both pumps was ragged up. Nothing pumping. So I thought I was gonna have to call a rental company to bring me a pump. The pump at the lift station down. That pump was about, what, two hundred dollars a bay, probably to rent that pump. Plus delivery, one way is like a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. So after finding with it, till about three o'clock in the morning, I finally called DJ Hawley, Public Works Director in Jasper. And, uh, called David Galls. And they brought the pump that they had over here to pump that lift station down. So David and I, we got the pump hooked up and about five o'clock, we start pumping it down. And then Barnes came over about three o'clock Wednesday afternoon, pulled the pumps. Both pumps was ragged up, there were baits in there. We found a bait, we found a screwdriver head.
Jeez.
A baby dub, I mean, just-
Holy stupid stuff.
All of them. So we got the pump cleared, put it back down in the hole. And about seven o'clock that evening, got the lift station to return back to normal operation, been pumping five ever since. But the pump, Jasper still letting us use the pump out here just in case. The pumps was getting raged up again. So, I mean, no charge at the time. They came over pretty flat and brought us a pump. And I just, I'm, I'm glad that I had that relationship. And now we can sign for them, and they know. So I just walking in, City of Jasper, we're doing that part down.
Did you say never thank you?
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll-
We also need to thank you for your time before any of that. You was there all night, all day.
We appreciate it.
Brady's a big thank you.
Big thank you.
You know what, nothing runs over. And nobody's, sewer's back built. And that's what's worth it to me, that's my deal, that's why I'm here for.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that's for that.
We thank you for not coming and wanting ten and twenty thousand dollars today.
We're all panicking.
I got one, one other thing, uh, just gonna bring to your attention. Uh, the sheriff brought the three cars that, uh, uh, went loaned and killed their lease tools. Went over there to the sheriff's department, come down. They'll come down here, but they got all, all the radio equipment, everything in it. And they got a gentleman coming from, uh, Jasper next week is gonna come and take all that radio stuff that we did.
All the official police stuff?
Yeah, all the police, all that stuff, stuff out there on the side. But once, once we get that done, uh, I think that our color dot is probably in better shape than the, uh, crown bit that I, I was able to get to the order medication. But when we get them cleaned out and ready to go, I, I'd like to, uh, let's, let's declare on surplus to the needs of the, of the city. And off of the seal bids, for the highest bids, for sold as is and that, so.
So, we're keeping, we're gonna keep one?
We're gonna keep, we're gonna keep one.
Tracy's, Tracy's car.
So we're gonna keep Tracy's car and the Crown bit?
No, 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 get rid of the Crown.
You're gonna get rid of the Crown because it's a nineteen out of nine.
These are about fifteen or seventeen.
Tracy's car, I ain't do it, interior, I mean, cars are good shape.
And it doesn't have an extra pedal for it, so.
They're talking about Robert Day, car got, come to break.
We're gonna, don't touch that, don't touch that.
In order, with the holidays coming up, we're not gonna be meeting again to, hope, hope it's not until January, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna keep operating and, and going through that, so.
So maybe we can use some of that surplus to put back into what we took out for all this other stuff? Is that how it works?
Yes, maybe, maybe, back in the general fund?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have no idea, I hadn't even, haven't even taken much, uh, most of the time, they've got a lot of miles on to, uh. No, I, it's not gonna be a ten, fifteen thousand dollars, I'm taking that.
Yeah, I might as well, I mean, I've been, I'll pay sheriff department, driver, my horse.
Sure, yeah, I, I just put it outside of them and, so, but that-
How many miles was still on Tracy's car?
I don't know.
Very, very hard, thank, thank you.
Walter. Yes, so only one thing. Um, and I don't know if we've talked about this, but about our fifth council member and the fifth seat. Um, how, what, what are we gonna do? Are we going to maybe say, give a return date? And if there isn't a return date, then put out a notice to get it filled by appointment or, or what?
Can we send out a notice first?
That's what I was thinking, I wanted to hear.
I know, you know, we, we've got to find out whether, but if not by sometime certain here that, uh, you know, because this is six months or more.
Right.
And I know it means you're sick, it's, but we want to do anything that will cause us in trouble with the headaches or anything else. We definitely need to get somebody that's gonna be here for, to help with the city.
I would recommend, um, let's say, find out something before the end, by the end of the year. And let's say if the intent is not to return, then we know to put out a notice that maybe we could have some, um, interest letters by the January meeting.
I love that. Depending on, depending on what, how Shirley's feeling and what she wants to do.
Right, if she does feel overwhelmed and wants to back out, then we'll have some choices at the next meeting. Yep.
Okay. Her seat's up in-
So you can write the letter?
Her seat is one of the ones that's up in April.
Yep.
Oh, with me and Robert.
Yep.
Only that, though, I don't know if we have to have, uh, any notice about appointing somebody now.
We can appoint within, if we're, we've passed further away than four months of the election. So it would have to be done like ASAP while we wait for the election. Which puts us in a full year without somebody. Right, right. So we need to do it ASAP. So the beginning of January would probably be our last opportunity because elections are later and April.
April.
Yeah.
So maybe can we send out notices with the, uh, would that, would that-
We have to give her time.
No, we have to give her.
We're getting anything.
Water bills are coming out.
And let her, give her seven days of response.
Say that again.
When do the water bills come out?
First of every month.
So that would probably be, that would give us enough time. If we didn't answer from Shirley, then could we go to notice in the water bills that we're requesting, um, whatevers for appointments, interest for appointments?
Yes, whatever Mr. Garner wants to do with that.
Yeah. And, um-
And also you might need to check with, um, Laura Hutton in Jasper and see how we need to proceed with it.
Oh, so we don't interfere with that?
Right, you know, if you want me to, I can call Laura.
Cause I think we probably need to start talking about mapping out dates for the election.
Right.
Yeah. So that maybe by January, we can have the notices ready for approval.
Right, and I'll check with her tomorrow and see how we need to proceed with it.
Okay.
March is be here before we know it, and we do, uh, you do the qualify, what, qualify in March?
But applications do go out like two weeks before the end of, uh, February.
Right.
Our council will be thirteen.
Okay, that'll give us enough time if they go out at the beginning of the month, the beginning of January.
Right, application to pick up in February, the end of February, kind of like can in March. Like they happen again by March.
I think it's around March the fifteenth, I think, like.
Yeah.
Around the fifteenth or something like that, like.
Right.
You should do like the second, Thursday or something like that.
Yeah, so we'll have the notices by the January meeting so that the council can approve, so then we can get them published.
I gotta do this all over.
Yep. That's it? That's it. Okay.
Next on the agenda. Right soon.
Oh, again. Okay, um, Breakfast with Santa, um, next weekend, next Saturday. Doors will open at nine, breakfast will start at ten. Still need donations for toys. Um, I do have, I did not, I didn't go home before I came here. But I do have a list of people who called and registered some kids for the Breakfast with Santa. Uh, we still have taken donations, um, still need volunteers to come out. So anybody who would like to come, you can be in Nellie Black's kitchen, um, eight o'clock. Saturday, next Saturday morning, December the twentieth. If you have any toys or anything that you would like to get, gift cards or whatever for kids, um, you can bring them here to town hall, or you can drop them off at the library. Um, if you know any kids that need to register, any families that are in need for kids, um, have them to contact the Nethia or Miss Veronica at the library. And hopefully let this town come together and make Christmas very special for these kids. Because this has been a hard year for a lot of families. And I don't, I don't, I don't want to see any kids go without. Might, I can do a bunch, but we can do a little. At least do something for them and make this enjoyable festive occasion for the kids. Oh, yeah, and my other notices. I know y'all saw Ghost sitting on the table. Um, help, she was adopted today, um, from Hamilton County Animal Shelter. They have dogs and cats, kittens, puppies, um, that are there looking for forever homes. So if you all can, get in touch with Miss Megan or Natalie, um, at the Humane, at the Hamilton County Shelter. And go adopt a pet.
That's the Hamilton County what?
Hamilton County Animal Shelter. Um, nine forty, what is that, just nine forty Oak Street in Jennings, Florida. That's where it's located, I went there today, so it's nice. And they're working, they got a lot they're working on, trying to get done and get it fixed up for their animals. But y'all go ahead. She left a lot of friends there, we got Ghost, she left some friends there. So y'all go adopt some of her friends, anybody who's looking for a pet. Support our Hamilton County Shelter, please.
Tell me about our speaker the other night. Tell me about our speaker at the dinner.
Oh, okay. Um, Thursdays, last Thursday, December the fifth, Sanethia, Cheryl and myself went to Camp Anchorage, Camp Anderson Anchorage in Old Town, Florida for a Swan River League of Cities, um, dinner and meeting. It was the Christmas dinner. We had a wonderful speaker, Ms. Gambino, Laura Gambino. Um, she does a lot with the city, with the state of Florida and Florida League of Cities and Swan River League of Cities and different entities, municipalities and counties. And she talked to us about AI and then also being personable ourselves as hu, you know, the human side of running businesses and running the town. But also we had a drawing and our vice mayor wanted to be-
Make a gigantic gift this evening.
Yeah. Um, I, I want a Fabio's Grill. The tabletop, the tabletop grill from Bass Pro Shop. I got me a little stuffed fish, it came with a propane tank, all of mittens, everything I was gonna need to cook the food.
Okay.
Perfect gift.
It also, it also came with an attachment.
That'd be a perfect kid's gift.
It also came with a thing to, you can use it in your boat.
Oh, yeah, I can attach it to, like, I don't have, I was like, there you go. But you can attach, it has a little thing that you can attach it to, hold it to the-
Like you put it on a boat, I don't know what that means, but.
It was a wonderful night.
Go, go see her. Tell her she wants her toilet to flush.
I got a kid, he's a Christmas gift.
Big kids don't count. When you're in your fifties, you're the lower kid.
They're always kids, I'm aware of it. You know the difference between the men and the boys is the size of their toys, right?
Right.
Okay, Sharon McCall?
I'm done. I asked all my questions, I don't have anything else.
Well, okay, um, we, we, um, the town manager, we did go to the county commissioner's meeting on last Tuesday. And, um, they told us, we have someone that's interested in doing the, um, um, code, code enforcement. And they wanna, um, join together with White Springs, Jasper and Jennings. So they gonna try to, um, form a meeting. And we gonna talk about how we going to format that. Cause, um, there's some things that came up that they, um, was, um, surprised at, that, um, of, um, the cost. And I think, you understand that White Springs paid fifty dollars on that. And I think Jennings is twenty dollars. So, um-
Yeah, we have Stiggy.
Yeah, Mr. Stiggy, so, um, they talked about, yeah, they told us surprise with, um, me and, uh, Lee. Cause we didn't know anything about that one.
But it's a good surprise, right? It's a good surprise?
Yeah.
The only word, the details are, is it?
Yeah, it's a good surprise because we didn't know that no one was paying attention for our code enforcement, you know, for our town. So that was like, that, that was an open gift.
Now you just gotta get around the losses. Yay.
And, um, um, the other thing is Thursday, when, uh, me and Dee was over there in Orlando. And y'all see, um, this one right here. This was the, uh, the network, the network that got back our heads. We didn't know they was taking pictures, cause we so busy talking with everybody. And I was at, you know, trying to tell them about Tom White Springs. That's the back of my head, so y'all can see, yeah, that's the back of Lee's head. We were here talking to, he's talking to one guy and I'm talking to one person. So that was kind of cool, right there, everybody getting talked at one time. So, you know, then we had to move on down to the next, but to get to the end.
So you talk to everybody?
Yeah, just about to everybody, just about everybody. Yeah, and this one, like here. This one right here, they caught us off guard, cause a little young lady came and said, oh, y'all are so good. Y'all just laughing and, and having fun and, um, that's what we did. And don't mind us, we just gonna take pictures. And I didn't even know, I was up there talking and I'm talking to her, I didn't know they was snapping my picture at us, I ain't trying, Lisa. So they, they, that was good and I met a lot of people.
So we have a famous mayor.
We had been meeting people that I met years ago when I was on the council. And the new people that I'd never seen before, they was like, wow, we are so glad to see you all. We are glad that everything is working fine in the White Springs. And don't be surprised, you have somebody coming to White Springs, all that matters. So, um, come, come try to ask. So I was gonna go there, uh, and they come up, Nethia, be ready.
I'm always ready.
So they were coming through.
You're gonna get lost, I'm gonna have a bunch of red hair.
I'm always ready.
Why we call it sweet knee?
Yes, right. Also, he got a new name now.
I always had that.
So, so that was it, that's it, we, we, uh-
Sound that, let's go on.
We did. I ain't say we had a good time, but we was busy, we was busy, but everything was good, everything was good. So I'm through with that, uh, anybody have anything else to say?
I moved and it's meeting is adjourned, a second.
Alright.
I'm sorry, all that work.
We're here, we're here, we're here, we're here. They're having the legislative, uh, conference in Tallahassee, the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of January.
Oh, January, for sure.
Probably like lobby dates for the-
Yeah, 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 that's it, that's it.
Okay.
So, uh, need, need to know who is going, if you, if you're going now, we've, we've got to make sure, if you sign up.
Twenty-sixth, September the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so we, we leave, we leave here on, I don't believe that.
Okay, I can do that.
So if, if we do go, you got to make sure that you go.
If you do go, I've got to know when we're going so I can make arrangements for my gritter.
Right now, yeah, we leave here the morning of the Monday, the morning of the twenty-sixth.
What time?
Sometime in the morning.
In the morning time.
We're gonna, we need to be there by two thirty or three o'clock.
So if we leave at ten?
And we'll be back Friday, late Friday after the, uh, late meeting.
Probably the day.
All week, but I can do a few days. Coming home, Wednesday.
It's just three days.
Monday, Monday night, Tuesday night, there. And I said, and I said, probably if y'all want to, we'll, we'll do it at my house.
Okay, here's the motion and second that we, y'all adjourn and y'all meet. Are you in the discussion?
None.
All the favor?
I, I.
Can we adjourn? At clock.